I'm going to call to order the meeting, the December 6th meeting of the Westford School Committee at 7:01 PM. Good to see everybody. Everybody get online? It's like technology, one thing after another. And for folks who are joining at home, you already know this, but you're joining online in some format. If you're on Zoom, oh wait, you're not on Zoom yet. Because I didn't say go. For folks who are joining us on Zoom, both of you so far, if the audio is not great, and you want to listen on the YouTube channel or on the Westford CAP website, that you might have better luck there. And the other note is that tonight, we're usually on the Westford CAP Government Channel, and tonight, we are on the Education Channel, which is Comcast 99, Verizon 33, if anybody wants to go tune in here. And with that, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments on any of the items there? Lauren?
Had a couple. Just wanted to make note for anybody who was watching at home that, because I did a double take myself, I admit, the exchange, foreign exchange field trips that we are approving are for spring of 2023. So this is a long-range planning. I myself did a double take, thought I'd clarify that. I also had a question about the resolution of intentions regarding the Blanchard roof. Can I presume that's for MSBA purposes?
Yes.
They need that? Okay. Just checking.
And you all saw that in your packet, and I have the copy here.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined in the meeting agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? And that was Valerie with the motion, and Catherine with the second, and that was you naming this. Thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. If there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comment, raise your Zoom hand, and we will get to you. And if there's anyone in the room, like Megan, or anyone else who has public comment, feel free to come up and fit the mic. You're first.
Yes, can you put their name and address?
Yeah.
To be ultra concise.
And so we're going to ask you to say your name and address, and then at some point also write it there. That's just so that we get it in the minutes with masks.
I don't know that I can do that simultaneously, but I will say. I'm Megan Agroth, eight Timberly Lane. Thank you all for considering funding full-day kindergarten. As a school administrators and school committee members, you consider hundreds of decisions every year that affect our schools. Very few of those decisions have as great an impact on equity for all of our students and families as this one. My children are well past kindergarten age, but they did attend kindergarten here at the NAB school. Full-day K wasn't an option then, dark ages. Every student attended half-day, and an optional fee-based extended day program meant two, three, or five days for those who wanted or needed access to it. That system, like our current full-day K system, was a lottery. For many children, mine included, spending the whole day at school meant more time to develop social and emotional skills with peers, access lunch and specials, and experience an appropriate transition between their preschool years and first grade. Fast forward to the last few years after Westford introduced full-day K and have increasingly added full-day K classes due to demand. While all of the configurations we've had have made the best efforts to meet the educational and developmental needs of our youngest students, they all fall short in the equity department. Lotteries occur some years where the desire or need for full-day K is overwhelming, leaving families to find costly alternatives that mean more transitions and more new routines for their children. Some families desire full-day K but don't apply simply because of the cost. Some families choose private kindergarten because it meets the scheduling needs of their families, and then enter WPS in first grade, causing our kindergarten and first-grade class size numbers, excuse me, to be the most unpredictable year to year. Full-day K classes allow for more stability in staffing, as half-day and full-day K enrollments will no longer dictate teaching staff and will allow for more, far more balanced classroom distribution. Spreading the K curriculum throughout the full day and having the opportunity to spend more time with emergent learners allows our school staff to know these students better and meet their educational and developmental needs sooner and more effectively. This, of course, does not mean more curriculum, but rather more time for curriculum, more time for social skills, more time for play, more time to spread out learning standards in a more age-appropriate way. Funding full-day K for all of our students would bring much-needed equity and stability to our families, students, and kindergarten teaching staff, and I hope you will consider approving this recommendation. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
And thank you for doing that. Right legibly, okay.
Quickly and legibly.
Quickly and, no, you don't have to be quick at all, actually. Thank you. We're going to bring in somebody on Zoom who would like to make a comment. And I should have said, just a reminder, we want to limit comment to two minutes per person, just so we make sure there's not a plan for anyone who wants to do this comments. Hi, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Perfectly, yes.
Okay, so I'll start for my two minutes. Hi, my name is Lauren Hummer. I live here in town. Chris, I believe you said I need to state my address.
Yeah, if you could state your street address, thank you.
Three Burnav in Westford. I'm in a neighborhood. I'm a mom to three small kids, and I also wanted to voice my support and excitement for the fully-funded full-day kindergarten program that the school committee is going to be discussing today. And I wanted to use my time to share my family's experience with the lottery system and how it affected us. For the 2020 to 21 school year, my son was one of 18 students who was on the waitlist for FDK, and we did not get in. My husband and I were extremely concerned about what it would mean for our son's social and emotional development and whether he would fall behind academically. When we attended the orientation, our fears were amplified because the entire program and the way that the orientation went was, the program was discussed really in the lens of the full-day kindergarten experience. And several of us parents of half-day kids were asking in the chat, is this available for my child? Will this be available for half-day kids? And the answer was systematically no. So it really highlighted the fact that the half-day program really is feeling less like the default and more like a side option, and it really highlighted all of the things that our kids would not get access to. Now, of course, being the pandemic year was a small silver lining for us in that FDK was canceled entirely. So instead of being left out, my son ended up being in the same boat as all of his peers, which was good for us, but also, I think, bad for all of the students because we had the half-day experience. And I would just say that in that experience, my son struggled with the lack of time. A child who loved class, who loved school, was telling me he didn't want to go to NAB because all he could do there was work. First grade is going much better for him because he has a lot more time to explore the concepts, and we're just very thankful that it's going so well. So I know my time is up, and so I just wanted to say thank you for considering this program and for focusing on equal access for all who need it, for the kindergarten and full-day program.
Great, thank you.
And I yield my time?
We're going to yield it for you. I'm going to put you back as just an attendee, okay? Thanks, have a good night. We have a couple more Zoom folks who'd like to make a comment. Okay. Alberto, you're next.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you very much. Good night. Well, my name is Alberto Gomen, and here is my wife, Elena Gisazola. We are neighbors of Westford, here in 68 Providence Road. And, well, we also wanted to present our support for the full-time kindergarten program. We are parents of three kids, very similar to Lauren, or all those kids. Well, with COVID and so on, it was a whole experience trying to bridge the gap in his development. And we really think, and we had to look for alternatives for the younger of the family that are just going to be in the kindergarten age. So we really think that this sort of program really helps them develop and be much more ready for when they go to first year, and we will really support the program. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Appreciate the comments. Jessica, you'll be next. Hello.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you great.
Excellent. So my name is Jessica Maroon. I live on eight Eldridge Lane here in Westford. I'm also a mom of three young children here. Most recently, my son went through kindergarten in our fantastic pandemic year last year. He also went through kind of, or I should say, we went through the agony of the lottery system ourselves as well. We also did not get in. We were one of only 18 students in the entire NAB school that was not going to receive full day, that wanted it. And I think that brought the biggest concern was not only the development part of it, also the catch-up aspect of what he was going to be faced with in first grade compared to his peers. And I think, I echo all the statements that have already been said. I'm really here in support of everyone that is saying that. But I also just have a question, because we really don't want that to happen for our other two younger children, where they're just not offered the same opportunity for learning in the same school system as everybody else, that they will eventually be sitting next to you in the years to come. And so if there could be clarification, just because I've missed a few of your other meetings, but I understand that there is something to be said about us funding it for the first year and then partially for a second year and every year thereafter. We will receive additional support in order to have the program fully funded eventually. And I'm just not sure how accurate that information is. And I was wondering if you could share, maybe with the greater group, the benefit to us funding this for a period of time in order to eventually receive additional funding from Chris?
So what I'm going to ask you to do is to stay tuned for the portion of the agenda where we're going to discuss this, and we will go into full detail on all of that. Okay?
Okay, great. So I guess with that, I'm just really hopeful that we can offer equity and education and the opportunity for our children to learn. There was a significant difference in my child's experience being half-day kindergarten last year compared to this year for approved. And it wasn't maturity-related. It was really the time spent focusing and learning and the time spent socializing and making friends and how to interact with his peers. So I don't think that those things should be dismissed as unnecessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comment. And one more on Zoom. I spoke too fast. Hi, Courtney.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, you can hear us, right?
I can hear you now, yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Courtney Schmidt. I live at 45 Pildra Street. I have four young children. And I am, I've spoken with other members of the school committee about this, but wanted to share my concerns or just my thoughts about eliminating the half-day option in the next year in particular. I support equity and education, and I support the full-day kindergarten program for all who want it. But I think moving forward, the 22, 23 school year, having, eliminating a half-day option for kids who didn't get the preschool last year or maybe get the preschool this year and need a little bit more time before they enter school, just to be in school for six hours, I feel like that's potentially detrimental to them. And I think it could potentially set teachers up for some issues as well. And trying to put kids in six hours of school that aren't ready for it, particularly after the last few years that my kids were homeschooled or they preschoold here. So again, I support the full-day kindergarten option. I just don't know that eliminating the half-day option next year makes a tremendous amount of sense, given the reasons why we're getting this funding, being COVID-related, and not knowing what kind of support that the kids who are not ready for six hours of school a day are going to be getting. And just, I also have concerns about this sample, I guess, the sample schedule. I just don't see an awful lot of free play, a lot of outside time. I'm just concerned that five-year-olds are going to be put in school for much longer than they need to be when they're not ready for it. So I'd like to have that option for my children.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Appreciate you coming out. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And I've said this before, we have one more. And one more.
Zoom is busy, not the room.
Hi, Stephanie, you'll be next. There you are.
Trying to figure out this.
Yeah, no, no, you're fine.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So I know, oh, my name is Stephanie. I live at four Banbury Drive. I have four children, my own two stepchildren. So two of them went through the extended day program, two did half-day in another town, and then I have two younger children who will be coming into kindergarten the next few years. So I know I'm in the minority, but I would like to also express my concerns because I come from, I, my children don't go to any sort of preschool or daycare or anything. So kindergarten is their first exposure to a school environment, a structured environment. And I really appreciated the transition to that environment, not having it full day. So I want to echo a bit of what Courtney said, where I think that I agree with equity of access to everyone, but I too would like that half-day option preserved. And it's frustrating to not see any sort of possibility or anything about that in the proposal. And I would like to note that can be addressed for families who really don't want to send their children in all day. What can we do? Are we going to have to pay for a private half-day program? Or can we get our kids in the middle of the day regardless if it's a full-day program? So that's something I would like addressed because, you know, I have concerns about that. The other thing I wanted to address was the use of these COVID funds for full-day kindergarten just does not seem appropriate, in my opinion. And why, if this is adding, how much of this, I guess I don't understand the tax and the funding, similar question as what was asked earlier. You know, is this coming? Is our taxpayer is going to be paying for this once it's not funded anymore? And where is this going to come in front of the town for approval? Or once you guys approve it, like that's it? That's some of my concerns in the two minutes that I have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Same thing on some of those questions, I think. Stay tuned for the presentation, and hopefully those will get answered, at least to a certain extent. So appreciate your comment, and I think that's, I'm going to send you back to be an attendee so you don't have to be on camera really want to. I don't see any other hands in Zoom. Anyone else in here for public comment? Okay, well, thanks, everybody, for coming out and speaking tonight. And with that, we are on to informational updates. We will start with superintendent updates.
Thank you. So this last week, on Thursday, we had our early release day, and our buildings, in different age-appropriate ways, I think all of our buildings were able to take a great deal of the work that we've been doing with Dr. Kalise Warnum, and they had different presentations at their buildings, whether it was talking about creating environments for difficult conversations, whether they were exploring different microaggressions, different types of things that have been, that we've been looking at as far as equity and our work towards becoming culturally proficient leaders. So I thought that that was, it was a great opportunity. One of the, probably the most common pieces of feedback that we had was the idea that the PD days for something like this are spread out so far apart. So I know a lot of the principals were talking about trying to figure out how they can bring some of this into their regular faculty meetings as well, too, just because there was concern about the rich conversations that were taking place and then that having to be paused for such a significant amount of time with the whole group together. So on one level, I'm glad that they're seeing that and addressing at the same time. It's a wonderful problem that they wanted more time for it. So I feel like that's good. And then the only other thing that I had in the update, I just really did want to mention to all of you and to all of our families, sort of a reminder, especially in light of the tragedy in Michigan last week, that, you know, as we, have we returned fully to school, one of the things that is always very important to us is just safety and the overall safety of our students. And so I just wanted to let people know that we, even from the beginning of the school year, we've continued to talk about all of our different safety plans and protocols. And as we are talking about social, emotional learning and really supporting sense of belongings for all of our students, one of the things that we are talking about is, you know, do people feel safe? And so that's something that we just continue to talk about. And so I just wanted to kind of remind everybody of that and reaffirm that that's something that we, as a leadership team, still talk about regularly.
And a lot of, there've been a lot of strides in the past three, five, 10 years, too. It's a different, I think, a different safety landscape in Westford Public Schools than it was if you went back a ways. So just thanks to everybody who's given that attention to that.
Agreed.
Yep. Any questions or comments from the committee? Okay. School committee updates. I'm going to start with just a heads up that in our agenda-setting meeting last Monday, we talked about the possibility of taking our January 3rd meeting and moving it to January 10th. Just to give, because otherwise, it's like meeting, break, meeting, and it's almost like we don't really have a two-week gap there at all. So just to give a little time for there to be some space in there. Any concerns from the committee on doing that? And then we would then go again on the 17th. But as we know, often, January is, you know, every-week meetings because of budget meetings and things like that, so. Okay, so that's the first warning. We'll keep reminding people and...
Technically, it's the 18th.
Oh, you're right, 18th, thank you.
Just as you're saying.
10th and the 18th. All right, other school committee updates. Catherine?
It's more just to give people a heads up that our state representative Jim Arciero is organizing this coming Saturday his annual toy drive for Toys for Tots and also the Son Santa Fund. If anyone wants to donate some cash or checks to that, more than welcome. So it's this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Abbott School. And because of COVID, he's kind of changed how it happens, and it was very successful last year, so it is drive-through and drop-off. There may be some members here who may or may not be wearing ugly Christmas sweaters. Stay tuned. And if you can't make it Saturday morning, it's also happening at the Littleton Police Department that afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. So it's a very worthy cause, and Representative Jim Arciero has been doing it for many years, so it's very close to his heart.
Thanks, Catherine. Other updates?
Just well done for the Westford Academy Bazaar, the Blanchard Middle School presentation of James and the Giant Peach. And have we met since SpongeBob? And SpongeBob.
We have met, but we never talked about it.
Okay, well, they were all three events I attended in various forums, and they were all lovely, so that's all.
And Matilda's coming.
And Matilda's coming, next two weekends.
There you go. Lots going on. And apparently, the Bazaar has killed Hannah, so.
We were both so, I'm still just very...
I thought about you guys the past couple of days.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
No, it really, I came home and I slept, weirdly enough, I slept 21 hours. I came home at 6:00, and I slept till the next day till 1:00.
Oh, my gosh, wow.
I was exhausted.
You didn't sleep?
We got three hours of sleep in between, so me, Hannah, our other co-chair, because everyone was exhausted.
It was incredible.
I think that's our segue to student updates.
Yeah, so as you guys know, we had a very, very successful Bazaar this year. Lot of, lot of work. Shout out to Hannah, put in an immense amount of work in there. So that went really successfully, and we were really happy about that. As we just discussed, we had Professional Development Day. Mr. Antoni and I were talking sort of after that about how we can continue the conversation about making students of color feel included in our school and how I, as a student, can contribute some ideas towards that. So we are going to sort of take a look into that. Mr. Antoni also told me that for next year, we're like, they're, I think, either they've made the decision or they're looking at taking up the tech requirement for next year to graduate. So that's some important news. New sports seasons have just started gearing up. A lot of fundraisers from the classes are going on right now. So if you guys want to buy anything, you know, look. So that's happening. Regarding last, last, the two decisions that came out during our last meeting, the mascot decision, I think, was well-received in our school. And I think we're all ready to sort of go forward, onward and upward. There was definitely some pushback on the senior trip being canceled, but it has all died down now. And I think COVID is definitely something you need to sort of be aware of and incorporate into all your decisions. So that's sort of my rundown for right now. Not too much happening at the school, but yeah.
Sounds like a lot. I saw some of the feedback on the senior trip, too. I, don't read the comments, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. There was also some misinformation, though, so hopefully that got cleared up. Like, unfortunately, I think the ghostwriter was mistaken a little bit in saying that the committee voted on it. But it all died down. All is good now.
Yep.
And we're going to, you guys are going to plan something wonderful for the seniors still, even if it's not the trip, so.
Well, appreciate all you do to help the communication back and forth and what the ghostwriter does, and just, it really helps. And speaking of communication, you talked about conversations with Mr. Antonelli about students of color, you know, having a voice and being, feel like they can speak up on things. I know you mentioned the principals wanting to keep these conversations going. Do you like to report back to us if ideas get generated, if things are in motion? Like, I think it's just always good for us to hear and for the public to hear what things are percolating and generating at those levels. And I know we've had conversations with principals who have said the same thing. So we definitely know there's that desire to do more, so we appreciate it. Thanks, Megan. Okay, we're moving on to business. The first will be George Murray and enrollment projections. I'll just, yeah, I'll just do it on Zoom. Yeah.
You fix that? I will begin by writing down my name. I had the pleasure of meeting George. He had reached out to me, and he was able to come in and meet with me and sort of share with me, I think, the tremendous work that he's been doing for a long time. And so I had said, hey, would you, would you like to come and share this with the school committee? Because I think it would be really helpful for you to see it. I know it's been shared in the past, but...
I know it's been shared in the past, but I just thought it would be a great opportunity for him to come. And again, for us to also recognize you and thank you for all of the, I think, the work that you've put into this for so many years.
Thank you, Dr. Chu. As we've said, my name is George Murray. I'm a 50-year resident of Westford, during which I spent a total of 13 years on the school committee, a couple as chair. And this is my 37th annual enrollment report. And I'm not sure, you know, there are a number of you that I'm not really well-acquainted with, and I'm not sure if you've seen these in the past or if it's been in your packets, or kind of where it is, so.
I want to say it's been a few years since you've been here.
Yeah.
Usually, the report, usually, we do get it. It's been in the packet. And I think in the past, the superintendent maybe has spoken to it. But I want to say it's been probably three, four, or five years since.
Oh, yeah. It's been a while since I've been here.
Yeah, so we appreciate you coming out.
The... Right through, out the other side.
Sorry, I stopped.
One comment, you know, advertising. The, one of the measures of the enrollment analysis success, I think, is that it has, has been used by the state to approve funding for six major construction projects in, in Westford in a, in a string that we didn't think would ever end. But it started with the Blanchard School and Christopher Foley and Miller and the NAB expansion and kindergarten addition, the Westford Academy expansion, and finally the Stony Brook Schools. So it's, it was a very long period of very rapid growth in the town and a whole lot of support from the townspeople for the money that had to go into those new building projects. If, we could put the first slide up there. In your packet, I included a four-page summary of the report and the data from this year's study. And I don't obviously plan to, to go through that, but it's there. And certainly, if anyone has any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to respond to them. I wanted to start with this slide. Rather than getting buried in the detail of how the study is done and, you know, how many decimal points we go out to and so forth, this is kind of my overview of what's been going on with Westford's enrollments. So in the last 15 years, Westford Public Schools enrollment has dropped by 550 students. That's a school. 10.4% drop. K-2 enrollment, after peaking in 1999, has dropped 24% to 903. Now, one thing I would say is that I've, I've been reporting and predicting K-2 enrollment drops for 15 years. And it seems like there's always one apartment project or a new development or something else. Oh, no, they're gonna be coming, rolling in here. And it hasn't happened. Grade 3 to 5 has dropped by 19%. Grade 6 to 8 has dropped by 12%. And Westford Academy has had the smallest drop, but even there, it's 156 or 9% of the enrollment. Westford Academy, and Jim and I have talked about this over the years, was our most successful project in the sense of predicting the capacity that was going to be required for the school. And for close to 10 years now, we've been skating right along, pretty close to what the capacity, the capacity of the academy was intended to be and what we actually ended up with. One of my great learnings there, when we were worried about over, going over the capacity, was the conversation I had with Mr. Antonelli, who said, pointed out that, well, at the academy, there's a lot of flow. There are a lot of kids going someplace and coming back from someplace during the course of the day, so we actually pick up a little capacity. I thought that was a really interesting concept. If we, if we could go to the next one, this is what has been going on with... This is kindergarten right here. I need my new glasses. This is what's been going, no, these are births. This is what's been going on with births in the town, which has made it extremely difficult for the committee and the townspeople to figure out how to fund and adequately provide for educational needs in town. We've gone, back in the 70s, we had typically about 170 births a year. And that went up to 310, 320 in the mid, in the late 90s. And now we're back down in the, in the area of 150, 160. And it's been, it's been an amazing story. One of the reasons I wanted to mention this is that I used to make the projection of kindergarten enrollment based on births five years previously. And what, what I found, at least I believe this is the story, what, what we found was that in that five-year period, so many other things were going on. People moving in, people moving out, new construction, new housing, all of that, that it really wasn't a very good predictor. I mean, obviously, if it goes from 300 to 150, it's gonna have an impact. But as far as a tight correlation, that was difficult to come by. And so if we looked at the... I've only got two or three sheets here, that'll be a little fine, but... If we looked at kindergarten, it, it looks like that, but it's not closely correlated. So... Yeah, if you show the next one, Chris, appreciate it. Thank you. Did I go one too far? Well, let's, let's stay here. When we do the projections, when you roll it all together, K to 12, we're talking about, you know, 4,500 students, so it's a pretty substantial body of, of data. And so you get a curve that looks fairly smooth like this over time. Whereas if you looked at it by, let's say, the Blanchard School, there's gonna be a lot more jumping around because of all the local factors involved in that. But this is the story of Westford's enrollment, K to 12, over several decades. And you can see that we actually peaked back in, in the 2009, 2010 era. And if you looked at these for all the grade levels, K to 2, 3 to 5, 6 to 8, 9 to 12, you can see a hump in enrollment, K to 2, that then declined. And you could see then, that, see that hump in 3 to 5, and then a few years later, you saw that hump in 6 to 8. Well, it's gone from the high school now. So it's, it's, we're predicting a fairly substantial decline in enrollment. And just as a side comment, that fits with other demographic data that, that I don't have a lot of detail on. But I saw, I saw a news item in the Washington Post a couple of weeks ago that said that the birth rate in the United States has dropped to 1.63 children per childbearing woman. And it takes 2.3 to maintain the population. So it's going down. It's, it's only, at this point, a question of, of how far and how fast. So I'm gonna stop there. That's the, that's the banner headline, is that enrollments are going down. We have a pretty good ability to track them and know what's coming, and a whole lot of detail that we can fill in. But what I'd like to do is to fill that in by, by hopefully responding to questions that you have.
Well, I want to start by thanking you for 30, how many, 37? 37 years of this tracking. And it's just, it's, it's invaluable that we have this data and that we can look, look at this and project and look at trends. And I think, yeah, we see the decline, you know, the gradual decline, but there has been that, that steady decline in the past few years. Does anybody have questions based on the data?
I was just curious. George, you mentioned that you kind of stopped looking at the birth rate alone for the kindergarten predictions. What, what is it now you're looking at when you're trying to predict the kindergarten?
That's a good question. Thank you. There are several pieces of the data that we, that we use, this approach. What I do for kindergarten is to say, well, what's it been in the last 10 years? And draw a line of regression through that and project where it's going to go after that. Now, there's one caveat that I want to tell you about, and we could get into as much detail as you want on it. When I started doing this, and you saw those birth rates and the kindergarten enrollments, we were projecting, you know, we're gonna grow by 200 next year in, in elementary school. And in some years, we did. But it was a very unpopular conversation to have with the voters. And we had some people that said, I don't care what your numbers say, you can't use that number because it's too high. And, you know, you kind of scratch your head and say, well, where do we go from here? And what we did, what I did, was to take that 10-year regression. And if it was, let me get this right for you. If it was trending down like this, I would draw a straight line out in time. But the second year of projecting it, I'd cut the slope of that line by 20%. The third year, I'd cut it by another 20%, until after five years, it was flat. So after five years, the prediction was that, I don't care what it was back here, it's gonna be flat. What that does is that it puts a bias into the analysis, a bias for the status quo, that things are gonna stay pretty much how they are unless something really drastic, you know, comes along to influence it. What that means is, it takes some of the nervousness and the, you know, the oh-my-gosh reaction out of it. But it also says you can't count on those projections for more than a couple, three years. And if you're doing them every year, that's okay, because the three-year projection this year is gonna be next year's two-year projection and so forth, until after five years, you know, it's an actual. So we do that with the kindergarten enrollment. And just go from there with a regression and then force it to, to go flat after five years. One thing to keep in mind is that if that slope down is very gradual, you can play with the slope out here, you know, pretty much all you want to, because it's, it's near to zero. So when you take off 20%, 40%, 60%, you're not making hardly any change anyway. So it's, it's good in that it, it's a damper, either with growing enrollments or declining enrollments. It's a damper if the change rate is high. And if the, if the rate of change is not very high, it doesn't have any impact on the analysis. Let me, let me hold my, my next thought and let's see where the next question is.
I have a follow-up. So it looks like, on here then, your linear fit for 10 years, it's hard to tell exactly, but it looks like maybe a, a very slight increase, which due to your 20% tapering, you know, is, pretty much fades away pretty quickly.
Right, right.
But it is interesting that it comes out to a pretty steady kindergarten, i- if you project that. It's been pretty steady kindergarten enrollment.
Well, that's right. If you look at the last 10 years, Chris, the last 10 actual data points, a line through that's pretty flat.
Yeah. So, so the overall decline in enrollment, then, from your model, projected decline going forward would be from the cohort survival rate? Is that correct?
Yes. And, and it's, it's all the other factors that go into changing enrollments. In-migration, out-migration, hopefully small, but number of deaths, whatever. A lot of it is people coming into Westford because of the quality of the school system. And they usually do that in grades 2, 3, 4, in that period. So, you know, that, that is helping the issue, if helping means trying to hold it, you know, more level than, than the predictions would allow.
Anybody else? Lori?
I very much appreciate seeing the, all of the underlying data. I know we looked at the four slides tonight, but the report in the packet was super helpful. I know in the past, I think, we've always gotten a summary of your analysis, but seeing the, the complete one is, is very helpful. I, I had a question on the cohort survival rate.
Yes.
And it's, it's above 1 in the younger grades and then, you know, dips below 1 for high school. I, I feel like that makes some intuitive sense, but I was wondering what your thoughts are on, on why that
Right.
that CSR dips below the 1 in the high school years.
Yeah. If you look at those over a period of time, there are some really interesting stories to be told there. We had a period of probably 20 years after the Chauva Tech opened, where you would see the cohort survival ratio take a big drop from grade 8 to grade 9. Well, we knew where they went. They're either Bishop Gertner, or they were at the, at the tech. And that's gone away. It, it has disappeared for at least 10 years. And I'm not quite sure all the reasons for that, but it's good to know what's happening and to be able to keep it in your, in your thinking as we go forward. The other one that I always got a chuckle out of, and I used to kid Bill about it, was we take great pride in our graduation rate from Westford Academy. But every year, the cohort survival ratio from grade 11 to grade 12 drops. Maybe not every year, but I mean consistently, not big, but maybe 2 or 3%. And I used to say to Bill, hey, where'd they go? They were here in 11th grade. They only got one more year to go to graduate from Westford Academy. Did everybody all of a sudden transfer to private school? Never, we never really got a satisfactory answer to that. I mean, he and I both scratched our heads over it and said, well, isn't that interesting? Let me say a word about the cohort survival, because it's the, it's kind of the name of the methodology. And it's useful to have a, at least a cursory perspective on, on what goes into that. If we look at enrollments, actual enrollments this year, and let's suppose in a hypothetical sense, we look at grade 4, and we've got 100 kids in grade 4 this year. Well, how many kids do you think we're gonna have in grade 5 next year?
Are you asking, you're asking for an answer? Well, we'd like to think that we would have 100.
Yeah, exactly. And why would it, why might it be higher than, than 100? I mean, yeah, why would it be?
It could be higher than 100 if someone's moved in.
Yep. And likewise, people moving out. And likewise, new homes.
Right.
Reaching the market and being occupied.
Or just different families moving in and moving out.
Right, right. Some move in, some move out. And that's, that's the story. So the, the biggest booster we have in terms of being able to make projections is last year's enrollment. It's the closest we got. It's actual data. And that's why we use cohort survival ratios instead of just doing a, a straight-line regression on each grade. Because when you do that, you're kind of throwing away everything except that grade for the last 10 years. And the cohort survival ratio allows you to, to make maximum use of that. And so if you, if you look carefully at those cohort survival graphs, they, you know, they really have nothing to do with enrollments in the sense of being able to use those numbers. But they really tell you a lot about what's going on in the, in the, in the trends in enrollment. And, and one last thing, and I'm gonna shut up and try to answer any questions you might have, and I forgot to start my timer. A lot of people, when they talk about enrollment projections, they say, well, this is a, this is a multi-regression problem. Because all you've got to do is take all of the factors that affect enrollment, housing starts, building permits, interest rates, fertility rates, all of those things, and then put the appropriate coefficient on each of those factors, and you add them up, and that's what the enrollment's gonna be. And the thing I've never had a satisfactory answer to is, where do you get those factors? And where do you get the, the appropriate coefficients to apply to them? I've never seen evidence of, you know, somebody successfully doing that. In theory, it's, it's a great approach. But, you know, are we gonna go door-to-door and, you know, ask each housewife or working mother who answers the door how many kids she's gonna have? I don't think so. So, you know, there's, there's only so much that you can do with that. But it has been the source of a lot of confusion and some dissatisfaction with the approach that I use. I, I had a client, another Massachusetts town, who asked me to do their enrollment projections. They hadn't, they hadn't done any for about eight years, so. And they had, and they had just opened a brand-new middle school with eight-year-old projections, which really scares me. But I took like three-quarters of an hour to explain before I started, this is what I do. Some people don't like this approach. If you don't like this approach, I'm not your guy. You know, see if you can find somebody. Nezdek does enrollment projections, but they don't tell you what their methodology is. At least they had, they never did when I was on the school committee. It was just kind of, well, here's our numbers. Four grand, please. And so I tried to make really clear to people, this is what I do, and it seems to work. And that's the only rationalization that I have for it. And that's the only rationalization that I have for it.
Lori.
I just had one follow-up on the story you told and the question of where did they go. And this isn't necessarily an enrollment question, but I think it's really a school information question. I've always thought that it would be really interesting data if we had exit interview data with students who do leave our school system, whether they leave our school system to go to private school, or to go to the tech, or whether they're leaving because their family is moving out of state, or because their family's moving into another town. I think that would be really, really interesting data for us to have in terms of what are the reasons for some of that out-migration. We typically presume the reason for the in-migration, and we hear it all the time, that people are moving to town because of the schools. But what are the factors that do cause someone to leave our school system? I think that would be really interesting data to have. I don't know what the method would be for collecting it. I've kind of pitched for it in the past, but since the topic kind of came up, I thought I'd make a pitch for it again. I think that would be really, really informative data to have in the future.
We started actually collecting that information in 2019. We implemented a new form, an un-enrollment form, and then there is an optional box of, if you care to share, please indicate. So we actually have a spreadsheet with the different reasons, many of them left blank, which we cannot and would not press any further. But that's something that, moving forward, it might be nice to summarize and bring back to the committee.
Oh, yeah?
Great, thank you.
Another factor that plays into that kind of variation is the school choice program. How many kids do we bring into Westford now?
About 72.
Yeah.
About 70, 72?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's not huge, but that's a blip on what the projections are going to be, and how many openings you have, and how to do that. The other huge factor that I've only tackled once with the help of, I can't think of his first name, his last name was Dennis Rona, who was on the finance committee for a number of years. We interviewed every school principal and did an analysis of, how many spaces do you need to accommodate the educational plan for people in the system? And I won't go into the specifics, but, you know, it's strange, but every school is full. And that's because if you're a good educator, and you've got an empty room, you're going to find a use for it. And so we had to go through the, you know, cut the fool, how many are required for the educational plan? And what we found, not strangely, but it was, it sure was an education for me, is you have to start with special ed. You can't do space utilization without knowing first what you're going to set aside for all of the different programs, you know, for the special ed program. Then you can start populating classrooms. And he and I spent better part of a year doing that, and I won't ever do it again. It was just, it was an absolute nightmare. But it just cries out for, or did then, cried out for redistricting. That, we got some schools that got a lot of empty space, not empty, but underutilized space, and a couple of schools that are pretty crowded. So I think that is something that needs to be looked at, but I'm considering that outside my building.
We almost got recorded. Any other questions?
We're having microphone issues today. So I think, not directly related to the enrollment projections, but an interesting conversation that I think should probably come off of this is, we talk a lot about class size, and clearly, yes, there are a lot of mitigating factors that go into class size, but we're very often asked, well, where's your policy on class size? We don't have a policy on class size. There are districts who do put into a policy, who enshrine and policy class sizes.
Excuse me, Westford doesn't have a class-size policy?
We do not have a policy on class size. We have a practice, and according to our strategic plan, there's like an area we shoot for, but we do not have a policy that directly dictates numbers of classes.
Hmm, we used to.
We don't now.
Okay.
Numbers are a policy, but we're not limited to them.
No, we are not limited to those numbers.
Their targets, as opposed to limits.
Right.
Okay, yeah, that's the semantics, yeah, I got you.
So having a further discussion about that part of the policy that it's in, it is not its own standalone policy. There is not a policy, one policy people can go to, because this comes up in budget conversations all the time.
Sure.
And I think having a broader conversation about how we make those determinations, whether or not we want it to be its own standalone policy, is probably something we should talk about while we're talking about space utilization, and enrollment numbers, and the potential of redistricting in the future. Because it is sort of buried in that one little place, and it's not its own conversation, and it may need to become its own conversation. And there's a couple districts that have it. MASC doesn't have a draft policy for it, but there are a couple of surrounding districts who have put it in its own standalone policy.
We have, I think we have an anomaly here that would have to be accommodated in that policy, and that is the size of the Abbott School.
Right.
The size of the rooms at the Abbott School. That's a whole other story.
Ratios don't translate to school necessarily.
Right, right. Anything else?
Anything else before we let George go?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you again, our gratitude for your continuing effort on this.
Thank you for taking the time.
We should have George join us every week, every other week.
There was a long time when my annual conversation with Bill about enrollments ended up as recruitment. Pitch on his part about why I should run for school committee. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move to our new and exciting policy updates. So I turn to the policy subcommittee.
Fantastic. Well, we'll start with a motion to waive the reading on P 5327, Unanticipated Bus Route Interruptions.
Second. There we go.
Paul in favor? Lisa with the motion, Catherine with the second.
So the brief for tonight on this, because we don't discuss it in the first meeting, our policy on policies, as it comes up the first meeting, we discuss it in the second, we vote on it in the third, it goes up for public comment in the middle. So the brief on this.
You want to look at that?
We can do a diagram.
All right, so the brief on this is, there was a concern brought forth by a parent. There was an event that happened back in October where there was a bus route interruption. Children were let off the bus at a location. There was some confusion about how it was communicated. So the policy subcommittee has been working with John Piper in the Transportation Office. She's been fantastic. And what we bring to you tonight is the Unanticipated Bus Route Interruption Policy, which hopefully will address both morning and afternoon interruption, unexpected interruptions to, you know, the ferrying of children to and from school. So the process for this, because it's not discussion tonight, but the process for this is, this will get posted on our website. It will be up for a period of 12 days, so it will be tomorrow through December 22nd. And that actually, moving the meeting on the 10th to the 10th actually works very well, because we would have had to come back, the policy subcommittee would have had to meet immediately after the winter break, so that works great for us. And I think I covered everything. Anyone else on policy? Did I miss anything?
I think you nailed it, Lisa.
Sure. So the policy will go up for public comment on the district website, and it will go up today's, so it will go up tomorrow, December 7th, and it will be up for public comment through December 22nd. And then it will be voted on at our, it'll be discussed at our next meeting, which, someone help me?
The 20th.
22nd.
20th, the 20th?
December 20th is the next meeting.
So we will discuss it December 20th. It will remain up for public comment until the 22nd, and then we will vote on it on January 10th. Fantastic.
Just a question on the, am I counting wrong? 12? Okay, yep, sorry. I'm good.
Okay, so the next policy that we're putting up tonight is P 6110, Graduation Requirements. And we'll start with a motion to waive the reading of the policy.
Second.
Paul in favor?
So I don't know if Principal Antonelli wants to join with us?
If you wanted to provide some context, a nice brief overview. Similar to what?
You don't necessarily have to speak as fast as I do.
Jim Antonelli, Westford Academy principal, thanks for having me back. Hopefully we had a nice Thanksgiving. I'm here tonight to, I would have been here, quite frankly, prior to the pandemic to discuss this with you in regards to the technology requirement, 2.5 credits at Westford Academy. This, I think, has just gone past due, let's just put it that way. And what we want to do is, talking with Dr. Chu and Dr. Clary, is to give students more opportunities for choice. And certainly, what's happened over the last, you know, 19, 24 months, we've seen the use of technology by our students, right? I mean, they're technology wizards, even before the pandemic, I could certainly say that. So to provide students with more flexibility, we're asking today to reconsider the technology requirement, to remove that requirement, and give students more of an opportunity to take some other electives. At the last time I was here, we talked about the breadth of the electives that are available. We talked about choice for students. These are all good things. We still require 37.5 credits overall, and 117.5 in order to graduate, but this will provide a little bit of autonomy for students to venture out to different areas that they may be interested in visual and performing arts, and that entire category. So that's what we'd like to do. About four years ago, Wendy Pekacek, our former Director of Guidance, came, and we instituted the VPA requirement, which was great, and made some adjustments to some of the cores, upper top-top, based on mass core. And we feel like with this particular change, it would be a good move in the right direction for our students at the high school.
One thing I just want to add for people to just have that information, often when there are changes in graduation requirements like this, I know that it'll often be presented as impacting the incoming classes as opposed to classes that are there, but as this is providing flexibility to students, I think this is something that should be instituted if it's approved immediately, so that then all of the students would have the benefit from it, as opposed to it rolling through with each incoming class, if that makes sense.
Thanks, Jen.
So I have a question. It's like, so by removing the computer technology 2.5 credit, we're actually throwing, say, the students, they have to actually select one more elective, so which, in the sense of actually relieving the burden of students, should we actually not to try to force students to select one more elective?
Well, I think that the important thing is to make sure that the kids have a nice variety of courses. I think staying with the 117.5, based on what I've seen as other requirements from other high schools, we're right in line with those high schools. So I would say, you know, continuing, again, giving them the autonomy to make those decisions is fine, but I don't think we would need to change the ultimate end result of the 117.5.
Yeah, that's like, some students prefer, oh my God, I have to actually, really actually study something, instead of I can just slip through that course.
You can't have that, McQuarren.
It truly is providing flexibility, because the student is then able to, the student's able, once they've met all these other requirements, the student's able to then fill that with something else, as opposed to being, pushing them into a specific direction, it's actually allowing them to fill it with something. But yes, we don't necessarily want them to just not have to take a class.
Correct, correct. But they do have to actually put in some effort. That's one thing. The other thing, I think, I mentioned a bunch of times, is like, easily it's possible to actually substitute the PE requirements for the varsity athletes, because like, for varsity athletes to also take in PE, it sounds like a waste of time.
I think the issue we've had with that, it's been raised with that in the past, is because we charge an athletics fee, there's an equity issue that you wouldn't, you know, you're charging a fee, and that may not be, varsity athletics may not be accessible to every student, and so to give that advantage to varsity athlete. Why, in fact, the state, doesn't, that's a state.
The state requirement, it's a general law.
Are you sure? Because like, other school districts, like, if you do like varsity, you don't have to actually do PE?
They're in violation.
Yeah. Really?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I've looked at this, McQuarren, at every single angle, talked with other schools, but the bottom line is, it is a state requirement.
And just so people know, so 117.5 is graduating requirements. If you had a full schedule for four years, is that 140?
Yeah, you'd be well over 117.5.
130.
Isn't it 35 a year? It's seven classes times five.
Thirty-two and a half.
Thirty-two and a half per year.
That's thirty-two and a half per year.
Because you can take a DLT, which would have.
I'm saying, if you took a full schedule, it'd be 140. Right, seven?
Yep.
So there's still 23 and a half, 22 and a half credit hours that students have flexibility to take DLTs, you know, I guess one a semester, right? I mean, basically, a DLT a semester. So just to make Jen's point, there, you know, there's still, it's, you know, it's not a pack, you don't have to have a packed schedule every semester.
Correct.
I think you have a choice of electives, and a lot of the electives, I mean, you just look at the breadth of the electives.
Yeah.
And what students can do. I mean, there's something for everybody, really. I just had a couple of, like, fine point questions. One is, as I'm looking at this, and I'm projecting it right here, this is the total, can we, like, maybe draw a line and say total?
Sure.
Oh.
While we're in there?
Yeah. Yeah.
You're right.
And the other is, you mentioned it taking an effect immediately, does that include for this year's graduating class?
No.
No.
So do we want, do we need to specify in this that it's effective, you know, for starting the class of 2023? So there's no confusion?
Yeah, I would.
And I hate to put that in and then have to take it, well, you just, like we had with the foreign language, we had a, we basically had a date, because we knew that was going to, you know, phase in.
I mean, the other difference is that the schedules are already set for this year. So students are, so it would make a difference as to whether a student passed the class or not, and if they had to pass it and they didn't pass it, I guess that could be.
But it could cause a flurry of people trying to change their schedule for next semester too, right?
But it does, I mean, they.
Magna's, look, Magna's already looked up what she can take instead.
But it doesn't mean that that would have to be approved, though.
No, I'm just, I only.
You're right, I'm just thinking in terms of, if it's an extra layer onto a policy that's going to live.
I have well past the, well past the year whether it's important or not, but I think it could easily say, beginning with the effective, you know, give it an effective date. That's all I had. Oh, sorry, Mallory.
Just for someone with zero visibility to the WA elective list, or the class kind of list, can you talk about a little bit about what kind of classes are usually met by this technology requirement?
There's a variety of classes, you know, some computer classes, some musical classes and so forth, so there's a wide variety of elective courses that are.
Design, digital imaging, different types of robotics, computer program, it is, it's a wide range.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
And it's not a specific requirement on any college, colleges, or?
No.
Okay.
Good question.
And I also want to say, like, for people like me, this sort of works out, well, because I know my way around technology, I have not taken my technology credit yet, and what I want to do doesn't necessarily at all align with technology, I want to go down the business and marketing route, right? So right now, I'm taking like a dual enrollment class, and I'm exploring that sort of side of things with a lot of this flexibility I have now. And even with more flexibility, I can continue to take the electives at WA that I necessarily wouldn't have been able to take with this technology requirement. And again, I already, in my sort of field, I already know what I'm doing in terms of technology. I'm not saying I can't learn more, but as of right now, I don't need it. And so this would just be allowing me to explore more down the path I want to go down to into college, so that's why I think this works really well.
So Magna's a perfect example, being junior right now, she would not be required. She has not taken the required course.
She's put it off, she's put it off.
She's waiting for this day.
She's bringing me a copy for this one.
Well played.
Well played, yes.
So the question I have is, do we need to vote on adding those two things? Well, I mean, the total is, that's a typo, but do we need to vote on adding that line about the sunset clause, or should we wait and do that as we move into the public comment and discussion case?
I would say that we always have the opportunity to make changes through the cycle, and I'm comfortable with just you adding that, that it's not going to be, you know, an issue. People can watch this and hear that it's going to be in there, and that we can expect. I guess the question's when it goes on the website, tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I would do it tonight, and then?
Yeah, so people will see it, yeah. I think that's all we have to do.
Okay, so then the process for this will be the same as the other policy. It will go up on the webpage tomorrow, that's December 7th, and it will be up through the 22nd, and we will discuss it at our next meeting on the 20th, and then it will be voted on on January 22nd. And we will discuss it at our next meeting on the twentieth, and then it will be voted on on January tenth. So, the public comment time will close, but then the discussion and the vote will happen, the discussion will happen, and then the vote will happen on the tenth.
Thank you. Thank you, Policy Subcommittee, who got this at the eleventh hour last week and accommodated it at your meeting and got it for us today.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you for articulating the clear timelines as well, too.
I feel like I know so much more about the calendar than I know exactly what any.
My favorite is whenever you talk about the policies, I'm policies.
Okay, we are up to the eight-ten agenda item, and it's eight-twelve.
Wow.
Ooh, impressive.
Full-day kindergarten.
All right.
And Megan's leading you back.
So, are you controlling it?
Yep, I'll put it up.
It's the one that I shared.
Yep, I'll go get that one.
Okay, thank you.
While he's doing that, I'd just like to acknowledge the fact that we have our three principals, pre-K to two principals here with us and the assistant principal at the Miller School, Heather Newman. She's the interim this year. And then we have three of our kindergarten teachers who decided to show up as well. Kay being one of them out in the door. Kay is a, Kay is a half-day kindergarten teacher. We have Jennifer Fiore Pelletier, who's a full day. And then Cassie Egan, hello, Cassie. She's a full-day kindergarten teacher as well, but she recently shifted from half-day to full day. So, fresh in her mind, even though people who have been with us for years all taught half-day at one point because that's all we offered at one point, she, over the past couple of years, was able to experience that transition. So, thank you all for coming. And we actually asked for the principals to have maybe one representative come in case you have questions that would be appropriate for them. And they're all here, so that's great. And one or two may or may not have asked for brownie points because the game is on and they chose to show up anyway. But they're here and they have prioritized well.
Maybe I'll screen share that.
Why is everybody just looking at one person? I don't understand. So, if we could go to the first slide, I'm just going to share a little bit of the overview of the history and then Dr. Clary's going to do the bulk of the discussion because she's also been a part of this. And like I told you a little while ago, it was very exciting when our Director of Finance and Director of People's Services and Assistant Superintendent were in discussing this initially and just talking about how taking a possibility like this to try to do something innovative. And so, one of the things that we'll talk about when we talk about the budget a little bit later, or at least the timeline of this, is the fact that there were some questions that people had about why would we be using S R three funds to do something like this. One of the things that we were charged with even by the, by the state when looking at S R three funds was to try to look at ways to improve programming, improve your district. If there was innovative ways that you can, you can add on and increase what you're doing as opposed to using it for PPE, different types of things that we've become accustomed to using some of the funds for. So, for people who aren't aware, back in August twenty-fourteen, there was a Citizens Action Committee that was formed to study full-day K. So, in the school year sixteen and before then, Westford Public Schools had a half-day model that was, it had two integrated full-day kindergarten classes that was located at the Miller School. So, you can read in that first piece. The report that came out of the Citizen Action Committee led to the proposal of tuition-based full-day K being proposed to the school committee, which was then approved. So, it started in S Y seventeen, school year seventeen. And one full-day K was added to each of the three K to two buildings. And then in school year eighteen, a second one was added. And then in school year nineteen, both the third and fourth. So, Miller currently has three full-day, thank you, as Ms. Boylan is, they have three full-day and one half-day program. And the other two schools have four full-day programs and then a half-day program that exists in their schools. So, that, just to give people a little bit of the history, some people might be new to the conversation, not realize that it's something that the district has actually been talking about, even the process of bringing full-day as an option in the first place. And originally, we were trying to do this so that, I mean, we're a public school and so hopefully that this would not be something that families would have to be paying for in order to do. But it wasn't something that we could fund at the time. So, that was what we wanted to look at. You can go to the next slide. I'm gonna.
Sure, and I think, I think looking at the history and the additions of the full-day classrooms speaks to the community's desire for full-day classrooms. We did not create it with our fingers crossed, hoping that people would just come. It was based on the previous year's level of interest and understanding we needed to expand if we could in order to meet the desires of the people who were interested. So, back when we first originally pitched this, here were some of the key reasons for wanting to provide a full-day opportunity. And recently, as we revisited this, speaking with the kindergarten teachers, both the half-day and the full-day, in some capacity, in a much more sophisticated way, expressed the same type of interest for full-day K that's listed here. So, certainly, students have more time for social and emotional growth. We have opportunities for explicit teaching to help problem solve if there's an issue on the recess playground or taking turns in the classroom, as well as the content and the skills that are being taught. And then there's also opportunities for more implicit learning. As something comes up, the teacher takes advantage of that teachable moment, whether it be something a little bit more around socialization or scaling emotions or reacting to problems or academics. It provides opportunity for students to interact, to take turns, to play, all of those skills that we all know we learned in kindergarten and carried through to forever. So, certainly, that happens in half-day as well. But the full-day provides for a lot more opportunity for this. Teachers also have the opportunity, simply because of the longer day, to build deeper relationships with students as well as with families. More time can be provided to, for opportunities for deeper learning. And we're going to look at that in some future slides when we're talking about our curriculum. There are more opportunities for targeted instruction. And this, this has to do with the time that each content block can be allocated as well as just getting to know and understand students as learners and then being able to tailor instruction based on their needs. Teachers know students as learners sooner because they have more exposure to them and experience with working directly with them. There's a stronger sense of community within the classroom because the half-day is very fast-paced when it comes to pausing to be able to build relationships. Our half-day teachers are incredible. They are not rifling these kids through the school day so that the students are highly stressed, of course. But we know that the full-day can be more methodical in terms of taking advantage of that day to create such an environment for students that fosters all of this. And then, students in the full-day receive all of the specials that are, one through five students do as well, art, music, PE. And then there's a trimester rotation, which each trimester, it's something different. And that includes health class, spirit, which is our code of conduct, it's character development, and then innovation lab, which is kind of a makerspace type of program. The, the half-day students for the specials, they have PE. So, moving on to the sample daily schedule, each teacher may adjust their schedule accordingly with whatever their needs are or whatever time they've been scheduled for a special. But this is a real schedule that exists now and is reflective in some way of what a typical day would look like. So, students arrive and there's some sort of morning activity that's engaging for students. It gets them transitioned into the classroom. Teacher has the opportunity to touch base with groups or individuals and get them settled in for the day. Then, students have morning meeting, which is a critical component to building a classroom culture and a safe environment for students where everybody's feeling welcome. It's also where they practice greeting one another, the basic social skills. They do calendar, they do weather. In this particular schedule, then, in the morning, they go to their special. When they return, they have snack and recess. So, this is some relatively unstructured time where students can interact, they can play. And while there's playing throughout the entire day, there's obviously benefit to playing in a way that it's much less structured. When students come in from recess, they have literacy centers, which this is where we go over our phonics program. Now, during these times, the way that it's listed here, it's listed as, in this case, an hour of content, literacy centers. But the way that those are structured, students are playing, students are interacting, students are taking turns. So, while on paper, for the teacher's point of view for organizing and scheduling, that's when literacy happens. But how literacy is delivered during the school day is fun for kids. Then they go to lunch and have another recess, again, more unstructured time. When they come back in, there's quiet time. And this varies from teacher to teacher, from day to day, how long this needs to be based on the students. This September quiet time might look different or have a different length for, for students in September than it would for students in March because the teachers are aware that they have to, students have to build their stamina. And we have heard from some of the full-day kindergarten teachers that this was adjusted significantly as compared to previous years because students weren't conditioned coming in out of a preschool program, or many of them weren't. And so, they didn't have the stamina. Some of them were, you know, continuing to want to nap. And there's a quiet time so that we aren't just assuming that all students can be, you know, fully attentive for the entire six-hour day. The teachers read the students, they understand developmentally what their needs are, and they plan and adjust accordingly. Then, another hour of math centers and choice time in this case. The teacher splits the class and has some targeted math games, some targeted instruction for half the class, while the other kids can do, engage in games, dramatic play, other things that they would like to do of choice. And then, there can be a flip-flop. Then we have other content, science or social studies, and students pack up. And they have a closing circle to capture the day, make sure everyone's feeling good, leaving the classroom, and then ready to come back for the next school day. So, this is just a sample schedule. They're not all identical, but I would say that the components is, is pretty typical for a full day. So, moving on, when we talked about the content, the blocks, I just want to provide an example because some people, I worry, assume that, and I think Megan may have mentioned it in her remarks, that because we're going full-day, we're jamming in more content and want to cover, so to speak, more. And that is certainly not the case. And so, I shared these slides with you to help all of you understand that the kindergarten standards are the kindergarten standards and there isn't a difference between full-day standards and half-day standards. So, we're reaching the standards by the end of the year regardless of which program students are in. But taking in best practices and fully allowing the students to experience in a way that builds skills, full-day can plan their, their content blocks more easily and more conducively to that than half-day. So, when we're looking at a sample math lesson out of our everyday math curriculum, we have, in this case, and in many cases, a focus lesson. And that's typically what the half-day kindergarten will deliver during their math block. Whereas, the full-day, they are experiencing the same content standard in math as the half-day, but it's delivered differently. There are other steps. There's a readiness activity, the focus lesson, just like half-day, and then opportunity for follow-up and differentiation within that same block. So, to get more specific, one of the kindergarten standards is to be able to decompose numbers that are equal to ten. So, ten combinations, six and four, seven and three. So, the focus lesson in our curriculum is what the half-day teacher may focus on and deliver within a specific block. So, in this case, this is an activity, bears on the bus. And students have those ten frames, which are the ten squares to help them understand what numbers make up ten. So, a teacher could model and roll a die. And if the number is four, the teacher would model for the students, placing four yellow bears on their ten frame. And students would see that. And then the students would color in a ten frame that's in front of them with a yellow crayon. Then the teacher may ask students to share out or turn and talk to say, "Well, how many red bears do we need to make the full ten?" And students begin to see that they need six, right? They've got four already, to make ten, you need six. So, then the students would, would color the, the red blocks. So, then the wrap-up is, you know, today, here's what we did. So, teachers make it interesting, they make it fun for kids. But in this case, it's solely the focus lesson, which is the meat of what they need to know for the standard. On the flip side, the full-day experience looks a little bit different. And it's, it's not more curriculum. It's just being able to take that component, that standard, and, and do some additional steps. So, first, they may provide a readiness activity, which is prerequisite skills for students in order to do the bears-on-the-bus activity. So, they may have students work with counters, which are little round pieces. And they may roll a dice that comes up with the number six. And so, they have to put six counters on their ten frame. And we're just activating their prior knowledge to show one-to-one correspondence. So, they don't yet need to know that four is the other part. It's just making sure that they can recall and the teacher's assessing, do they know that one counter has a value of one and a second counter together has a value of two? So, that's building their background knowledge even more. And then they dive into the focus lesson. And the focus lesson, there's time in the, in the block, so it can become more student-centered. The teacher, similar to half-day, may model the bear activities. And then students would have the time to work in pairs, play games, and compose and decompose ten partners. So, this is where kind of the play comes in, that structured play. But next slide. Once they get through that focus lesson, there's opportunity for enrichment for those students who have clearly mastered it and are ready to move on. And at that point, the teacher may take a group and help them, that group of students, if they're ready, see that from the ten frames, they, they direct them and lead them into figuring out that that means six plus four equals ten. So, it's taking that to the next level to build mathematical expressions. Then, there may be a group of students in a rotation that is experiencing a spiral review, which means it's revisiting things that have already been taught because we don't want to teach it once and then never go back to it. We want students to continue to practice. So, in this case, they're doing some grad activity to build on something that they had learned in a previous unit. And then they're wrapping up, talking about, what did you notice? What patterns did you see? So, it's, it's an opportunity for kind of more inquiry-based, student-centered. Moving on, I won't be as lengthy with the science. But there's also a science sample lesson, so this is forces in motion. We have, you know, our teachers are fabulous and they provide hands-on, whether it's a half-day or full-day. This is an example of a hands-on lesson with boxcars and, or boxwagons. And the idea is that students understand if you push something harder, it goes farther. You push it softer, it doesn't go as far, or if it's heavier, you have to push it harder to get far. So, in this case, students. So in this case, um, students would observe that when they push or pull box wagons, um, you know, the teacher might ask them to push harder, to push softer and, um, to add some weight to it. And then students are able to experience that too, understanding and, and experiencing for themselves how that works. Whereas the next slide shows that the full day is a little bit more inquiry-based because the science block would have such ti- a, a time that lends itself to allowing students, which is a science standard skill, it's a science practice, plan and carry out investigations. Yes, even at five years old, they're doing that, um, in an age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate way. So they're asking what-if questions. So the teacher may be able to give them materials and have them partner up and talk about, well, what if I push it just with my pinky? Or what if I put more rocks in this one than this one? And they have to come up with what the rules are and what the patterns are that they see. So it's, it's more student-centered, inquiry-based. So that's what the luxury of time gives us. And all of that is collaborative, it's partner work, it's, it's through game and play. So a lot of those slides I, or we shared with you in two thousand, um, February of two thousand and sixteen. And it's fundamentally and philosophically similar as to why we feel as though this, this would be a, a great opportunity in use of these funds. But if we've known this since then, why now? And the why now, we had shared this in a previous presentation. The SR3 funds bring a very unique opportunity. The reason why we did not do this previously, and I know school committee, committee members here and school committee members, uh, previously, were very much in favor, but the reality is it is inexpensive, a more expensive model. So now we have this $587,000 that perhaps we could apply to help kickstart, uh, this initiative. So that's, that's, I think, the biggest driver of why now in terms of this very year planning. We also understand that incoming students have had minimal preschool experience. So our, uh, last year's three-year-olds that are now, uh, four-year-olds who were in our preschool program did not have role model students. Um, there are some students last year who were kept home and, and didn't have experiences that they may have had if there was not a pandemic. Um, there was also a major lack of robust early intervention with, um, students prior to coming to us. If they are involved in early intervention, it happened to have been remote only in school years 20 and 21. So these are, these are the babies up through 2.8, I think so, ish, um, that did not get the same experience that they would have with regular EI, early intervention services previous. Students who participated in Westford's preschool program, I already mentioned that, didn't have peer models. And then staff report that generally speaking, currently, current kindergarten students are presenting in atypical ways and just that extra time for additional TLC and connection-making, they feel as though, um, it is, is, would be very beneficial for all students coming in, um, moving forward. So now we're going to kind of get into the logistics part of things.
Do you want me to explain this one?
Sure, please do.
A break, you're doing a great job. Uh, the, um, so this is what I, I started to talk about earlier. This is the, the model that we have as it is right now is we have four full day classes at Robinson and then one AM class. We have the four classes at NAB and then we have an AM and a PM section. And then we have three full day classes at Miller with then an AM and a PM section as well. So now if we look at this request here, what you would see is that if you look at the numbers, if we, at Robinson, if we were to add an additional .5 person, then that group of 20 could stay all day, right? So that would then become your one full day program. And if you look at NAB, we have an X over here because with these current numbers right now, you would say that you could add 12 and eight to make the one section. And that might work out if the numbers are the same as, as this, right? But, so that's why it's an X because we might need an additional person, but, but we, we don't know for sure. But then if we look at the bottom where Miller has 16 and 13, we know that we couldn't just add those two together. We would need an additional classroom. So that's why it has the, the definite add 1-0 there, but then the X is still the variable. Does that make sense to everybody?
All right. So the financial, um, information is what we have spent a lot of time on this year. And it was, you know, certainly a lot of work sessions with Pat, Chris, myself and Courtney. And first, we wanted to capture what the actual, and, and be able to articulate what the actual cost is of full day kindergarten. So the cost is this yellow box plus the blue box. And in the yellow box, if we just take it one at a time, I won't read one at a time. But this, these are the offsets that we currently put into our budget using kindergarten tuition money. So when we collect tuition, because currently we charge for full day K, it's applied to the budget to offset our budget in these ways. The total amount that we use here in FY22, for example, um, to offset our budget and rely on is $696,831. So we need to recover that if we aren't going to be collecting tuition. So that's something that we had to consider. Moving over to the blue, that's additional expenses. So in addition to all of those offsets, there's more that, that we would have to hire or think about. One is a classroom setup. There'd be one additional classroom, if you remember from Chris's slide previous. And we typically have a $5,000, um, co- cost associated with setting up a brand-new classroom that doesn't exist, furniture needs and, and other. And then Dr. Chu had gone over the one and a half teachers that would be looking to hire, as well as the one and a half TAs. So altogether, the new costs are $140,000. So when we're talking about, now I'm going to the white box, that's the summary box, $696,834 offsets, plus the $140,000 additional expenses makes the cost in FY23 of tuition-free full day K, $836,834. So there's this elephant in the room. So we've got this number of $836,834. And that elephant actually is two, two-prongs. The SR3 grant doesn't cover the entire clo- uh, cost because SR3 is not $836,834. As well as, click again, and the SR3 grant is a one-time funding source. So if we went full day K, that would be an ongoing cost, but we wouldn't keep getting SR3 monies. So it's a one-time funding source. So we have to consider those two pieces very carefully when we are looking to plan ahead and make a sustainable program, if that's the way we're going to go. So on this next slide, um, just for your memory, I took those two numbers that I had on the previous slide, the current offsets, as well as the additional expenses. So here we have again, the $836,834, cost of, um, tuition-free K in FY23. And then we also wanted to acknowledge one-time funds that we had that could assist, SR3 being an obvious one first and foremost. But we also have our, um, full day kindergarten revolving account. So after all of the, um, between previous years, as well as what's projected this year and the offsets we need to take this year, there would be a remainder of $319,500 in that account, which would be an appropriate use if we moved forward with this of that remaining money. It should be applied to kindergarten and it would be. And then we also have a revolving account, um, KED, that's kindergarten extended day. And that's when we used to, when we had half, half-day, which we still do, but when the AM students had the opportunity to stay in an extended day program in the afternoon and vice versa. And there was a, a tuition fee for that, um, program. So that account has 82,472. So together, um, we, we have $989,702 that can be used. Keeping in mind, they're all one-time funds and won't be reoccurring, but that, that could help us. We would have a transportation savings of approximately $121,000. That's that midday run for the end-of-day AMs and the beginning-of-the-day PMs. We didn't want to rely on that because we wanted to be conservative because, uh, we are renegotiating and going out to bid for a new bus contract. So we understand that, um, those prices will likely go up. And so we didn't want to just rely on this when that savings could in theory get absorbed with whatever the new contract will be for transportation. It would have been a little bit of a risk. It would have been nice and neat on paper, but really, we're not sure that we'd see that as an actual savings. So with, with that 989,000 of one-time funds, we came up with a strategy that would, um, distribute those funds along with some others over the course of six years. Now, one thing we would not be able to tell you is that we would be able to, in a free, eh, way and nothing would touch the operating budget, run a full day K program. It is an expensive program. It's a commitment from the school district, the school committee, if, if that's your will. Um, so we, what we can't do is pay for all of it with the one-time cost. And then next year, say now we're just on our own. That would not be smart budgeting. So we looked at the use of those one-time funds that I to- spoke about in the previous slide and distributed, distributed them in a way that we felt it was more gradual, would be weaning ourselves off the one-time fund. Um, starting with FY23, we're actually keeping this separate from the budget process because our initial, um, proposal to you here is that there wouldn't be any cost to our FY23 operating budget. And we would be able to use a portion of each of those one-time costs, um, to be able to cover the entirety of FY23 full day K. Then we adjusted, so you can see in the top SR3, we used half of it here and then half of it in FY24. For the revolving account, we actually distributed that over three years. And, and we kind of, eh, we, KED, we did just, um, wipe that out in FY23 in this proposal. And then school choice would be one way to, um, that would be a one, not a one-time fund, but it would be a short-term use of those funds to help us wean off. And so that SC is, uh, school choice that we could use to offset. Um, so that in each box, that bottom number would be incrementally how much more we would rely on the budget, or how much would rely on the budget for that year. But the additional cost that we'd have to find over the previous year budget is down the bottom. So it's in, in FY24, we would need to, um, build a budget that allowed for $319,306 to be geared and, and, um, channeled toward full day K. And then that starts to, uh, wind down in '25, '26. And then once we get to FY28, it will essentially be built into our base budget. And then there wouldn't be the added money. Now, um, some, some may look and say, well, how are you going to get the $319,306 in FY24? And that's nothing that we would be able or willing to answer at this point because there are so many moving parts from one budget year to the next. It would have to be that there's a commitment from the committee and from the leadership team, um, from the, the teachers, the kindergarten teachers who are very much in support of this. We, I, I dip-sticked with the full day. I met with, um, half-day teachers. And so this, this would, this would have to be built in this way into the budget each of those years. Um, anything else on that, Pat or Chris?
No. I, well, I will say that incrementally, you'll see that the, the number in FY28, the budget, what has been built into the budget by then is 918,000 because we did also project out the, how the program would increase in cost just naturally each year as well too. So we wanted to make sure that we had that, that target continued to move as we were looking at how we were going to bridge that gap and, and, and fully, and fully build it into our operating budget.
One of, one of the questions that had come up earlier, I should have mentioned it when I was talking about the math and the science lesson, is can, can we just allow for people to, um, pick up their students halfway through the day if they were not necessarily in support of full day kindergarten? And while that would be very accommodating to the parents who have that, um, feeling about their child and certainly have the right to, to make that decision for their child, whether they participate or not, um, the concern is that when you have a full day, it's more like training for a marathon. When you have a half day, you're training for a sprint. And those are two very different ways of training. So the half-day teachers know within those two and a half hours, they have to cover all of the content, may not go in depth. Um, and so that would take away from planning a robust, enriched literacy block or a robust, enriched one-hour math block. So fundamentally, that would compromise the integrity of the full day program. So that's not anything, um, that we would, we would recommend to the committee, although we understand that would be most convenient for parents. It does take away what we feel is so important for the full day experience.
Questions?
I bet. I bet there are.
Wow.
I predict questions. I've got one. Um, can you, do you have a, do you know this, um, of the 69 half-day students right now, how many of them put in for full day lottery? Approximately?
I don't have that on hand.
We have a guess? Roughly? Okay, so everyone would cho-
That was an account for people that didn't apply for it because of the cost.
Sure. But all the people at half-day did not put in? Okay.
I think there were waitlists and then those dwindled as people ended up moving out, even though they got, I, I think I remember this year, unlike last year or the year before, um, there, everyone on the waitlist did end up getting in, even if it took a little bit of time.
First time ever at now.
First time ever.
First time ever at now.
Interesting.
Can I ask the reason? Like why? I'm just curious as, was it just to do with the timing of COVID that everyone managed to get in? Or did some students go elsewhere to private? I'm just kind of wondering for future because I also know NAB is bursting at the seams.
I don't know, Catherine. I, I would love to have that answer for, um, Mrs. Marone and Mrs., um, that were just on earlier, that were one of the two that were 18, you know, on that list during that very difficult year. But, you know, I'm just not sure why that was. But we have, over the years, always had quite a few parents that decide in July and August, no, thank you, we're going to head to a different school for a different reason and we'll be back in first grade. I just don't know what, what the difference is.
I, I have some longer thoughts, but just a quick one that occurred to me. And I know, um, so we've seen these slides as the finance subcommittee, um, two weeks ago. But something that just dawned on me as we were looking at them was, and I know it's not going to come out to be a big deal, but that $5,000 for the classroom setup, that would really be one time, right?
Yes, and that was removed from our, our projected cost of future. Yep.
You guys are already ahead of it. That's all. Well, I mean, I have more, but.
But that one's good, okay.
That was the first one. Did you want me to, did you want me to?
Oh, keep going.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I, I mean, I think we've all talked about over the years how anything fee-based creates inequities. So I appreciate this, especially circling back with a lot of the discussions that we had in the, in the retreat, um, over the summer about programs in the district that we would like to see. Um, and I think I have a bit of a unique perspective because I- And I think I have a bit of a unique perspective because I have one kid that went through each program in recent years. I have to say that the half-day K was a good fit for that child at that time, but there's this kind of isolated perception. And, you know, no, this is not a reflection of leadership or staff members. It's just knowing that there's three other classes. It just doesn't feel balanced, right? Like, by meeting the demand over the years, we have led, we've like kind of created this majority getting one thing. And then, like, I mean, you saw the numbers. There's like twenty kids getting something while eighty kids are getting something else. And that's not just in those couple of hours, right? Like, it's in a pre-COVID year, that translates into the timing of field days, community meetings, you know, like the PTO in-house enrichments. So those kind of things that like lead to that community building as a whole school can be hard for the half-day program to participate in. And then I think another point that I wanted to make was that, over those years of meeting the demand and adding those classrooms, losing that kind of nice balance of two full-day classes and like a healthy half-day sections. You know, it's nice to say that school is not daycare, but because we have continued to add classes, there's really no other surround care in the community, right? Like, the demand just isn't there for outside organizations to hold those programs. And we, as a district, have taken the extended-day option as well. So these are all points in support, right? Like, I think this is the way we've been moving. And I think these are things that I've just seen that would help, that help give to this path that makes sense to me. I know the numbers are scary, even to someone who is very excited and fully supports it. And this, I guess, is more of a question, but because maybe to my lack of experience, but for a new initiative, like a new program, I mean, it's always going to have a bump, right? Like, so the only really ways to do that are a bump, an override, right? So the S R, to me, is like this really great chance to use that to do this new program and get over that hump in a smoother way. So those are just my initial thoughts. I know I have some concerns that, you know, it wouldn't be, don't have to be answers tonight, but obviously, I'd love to hear more about space concerns. If anyone's willing, I'd love to hear from any staff members. And then the one final thought I had was, since we are talking a couple of years out with our school budget, we should maybe think about how to have this conversation with town partners or whether this is, I don't know when our next joint chairs meeting is, but that seems like a good place to carry this conversation. Thank you.
Lauren? I'm very supportive of this proposal. I'm thrilled, and I echo Valerie's sentiment that I think this is a unique funding source that we have available to address something that is inherently inequitable in our school system. And to, I am glad that we're very transparently talking about the elephant in the room and that this is a one-time funding source and it is a unique source and that you have very methodically and transparently laid out how we would be essentially weaning ourself off this dependence on kindergarten tuition. I think this is an opportune time to do this. I think the pandemic has, and the resulting loss of the full-day option during the pandemic really highlighted, as it has in so many areas of society, that the pandemic has highlighted and exacerbated pre-existing inequities. And I think we saw that happen with our full-day K program. I think Westford's demand for full-day K has been trending just the same way it has been trending statewide. I mean, I did some quick Googling, so please, someone correct me if they have different data. But from what I found, ninety-plus percent of Massachusetts school district offer free full-day K, and ninety-five-plus percent of Massachusetts schoolchildren receive free full-day K. And Westford, with the tuition that we charge, charges the highest, one of the highest levels of tuition for a full-day service of those that still charge in the state. And so the number of towns that are charging are dwindling. We are going to be left on an island. And that is inherently going to start impacting the reputation of the school district, that this is an educational opportunity that our school system doesn't provide, that other towns are providing tuition-free. So, I mean, I had a slew of questions about the difference in terms of curriculum and how do we avoid curriculum creep? And you really addressed all those in your presentation, Carrie. And I had other questions, but I really did feel like your presentation addressed any concerns I might have had. I'm extremely supportive of this. I would also love to hear what the feedback is from staff, and I think that would be really helpful for parents to hear as well.
Sean?
So to know the comments that have already been said, but, you know, to kind of bring this full circle, and this is a conversation that I believe I've had with most of you on this committee, the stuff that George keeps bringing up is a little concerning, right? I mean, the decrease in enrollment itself, but particularly that we, as a school district, have always had these lower K to two numbers than we have for the rest of the grades. And I actually, in listening to Gloria, I wonder if this is kind of factoring into it, right? Like, I mean, why not go to a neighboring community if you don't have to pay for it, you know? So, I mean, in one of the ways, like, an added benefit of this is we're enticing younger families to come into our community, which hopefully will pay dividends in the future. But kudos, great stuff, love it. Another concern of mine is the three hundred nineteen thousand, right? Like, not the number itself, but it just strikes me that, like, the hard sell isn't really right now. The hard sell is really two years from now, right? So I guess my question would be to leadership is, would two years of having this program up and running, would that be enough data points to kind of say, hey, this is successful, it's working well? You know, because, again, it strikes me that two years, we're going to be having a very hard conversation about this particular program, right?
Yes, and we, I mean, because the majority of our students do experience the full day now, I feel like we have enough information to say that it's going well. But we have not had to make those difficult decisions of, you know, finding additional spots in our budget to help fund it. But I do think, as we, you know, we'll keep a close eye on how things are going. We can survey or gather information, however we choose to do that, families and staff members throughout the year next year as well, just to bring that information to you as we're building the FY twenty-four budget.
I mean, to that point, but it's, I mean, the decision's now. Like, we don't, we're not going to say, well, we have a year of it, you know, funded by S R, and then, oh, we were wrong, we can't afford that. I mean, we're not going to pull it back.
Right.
So we really are making that sell now.
Yeah.
And it's hard. I mean, I think you look at that number and you have to say, what are we willing to cut? Because we can't guarantee that, I mean, every year, the order of magnitude that we're seeing here of hundreds of thousands of dollars, those are the kinds of amounts that we've, in the past few years, had to reduce by or find a way to cover, right? That's been, that's really been the shortfall, those amounts. So now you're hoping, not only do we not have that size of a shortfall, but that we have that kind of a surplus. And we can't assume that. And so that's, boy, that's where I'm struck, because I love it all. I mean, everything you present is so well-reasoned and makes sense from every standpoint, equity and everything. But it's tough. It's tough to commit us to that, not knowing where that's going to come from. And it would, to your point, it's hard to project, and it's hard to say what things we do now because things are so fluid. But at least having the idea of, like, in what ways are we willing to sacrifice to make that happen? You know, if we had to, I think we have to think about that because some of us are going to be sitting here in two years and may have to answer that question. So you had a comment?
I actually just wanted to circle back to a thank you again for the curriculum coordinator tours that we were able to go on this year because I share the concerns of some of the parents who are thinking the half-day option may be good for their child. Because I did choose half-day for one of my children. But being able to be in the buildings and to see what's going on in the kindergarten classrooms, I think, looking at that schedule, you're thinking, oh, my God, that's, everything is straight lines, and everyone is moving, and, you know, time and timers. That's not what's happening. It is very fluid, it is very organic. There are, there's playtime happening. The kids are playing more than they're, the kids think they're playing more than they're learning. They really are learning. And it was, I think, for me, a real benefit to be able to see that firsthand this year, to then look at this presentation and say, yes, that is exactly what we saw. And I think, yes, I do share your concern about that bump in the first year, but when we're also talking about recovery from the pandemic, what we're hearing from so many of our staff is that there is a huge need to have more time with these kids. And we have kids who have missed almost two years of real school, and they're having to relearn school behaviors. And I think if we can do anything we can do to give them that advantage, yes, it will require very careful budgeting. Yes, it will require, like you said, conversations with our town partners. That conversation has to start now. But I think the benefits far outweigh, well, the benefits far outweigh what could be the risk in what we would have to make up. This is preventative care. This is not triaging down the road. This is the preventative care that the students need. And I think, honestly, if we plan carefully, the end result is far worth it.
Well, just to say, you know, as a teacher, actually, I'm, you know, in full support of full-day kindergarten. I think what can happen in full-day kindergarten is magical, you know, at just that age. But like that, I do want to be mindful of, you know, what are we saying no to? Or what are we, you know, maybe not considering? So one of the questions I wanted to know is, by choosing this option, Carrie and Chris, what are we saying no to? So did we look at other stuff that those E S S R three funds could also be used for? Because I also think it's really good for us to get an idea on what other options were there for this and also for families and community members to also kind of get a better viewpoint of where we came to this decision that this was the way to go.
So the, one of the concerns is the one-time use funds, right? And so the idea of what you could use this towards and have an impact on your, a positive impact on your foundation and on your students is, I think, the bigger challenge. So the different types of things that people were suggesting that we started to look at included, you know, when we talk about using some of this funds for supporting our nurses, right? And the work that they were doing. And we started to look at other ways to do that when we were even looking at the CARES Act and then the ARPA funding. Other suggestions were, it involved many of, it involved different staff, right? Like, even bringing back, bringing back teaching assistants in the lower grades, right? Which, again, would be, it might be a temporary solution to something, but you then wouldn't have the money to keep the staff members either as well, too. So it seemed like that was not a good long-term range solution for it. So when we started looking at the impact that this could have on our long-term range, being able to bridge this gap for something that we would not be able to do at any other time, this made the most sense.
I find that a strange point you say about the TAs because this is a long-term range, but something like TAs would also be a long-term plan. So we're able to figure out and make this commitment in the budget for full-day kindergarten, but that if we felt it was more beneficial to have TAs back in the classrooms in the first and second grades, that we also couldn't make that commitment, if you understand?
I do understand what you're saying. But it's because of the impact that this is having foundationally for the equity issue. And the suggested TA response was a short-term because of COVID. Because the reason why we had made some of those changes were also because of the work that our TAs are doing in all of the other levels as well, too. So, I mean, that had other reasons when we made that decision in the first place. So that's why, when we first started looking at that, we're saying that this is more of a long-term impact on the foundation of our students, right, in a different way. So that's the way in which I mean to say that.
Okay. And the other question I have, then, is regarding these added costs, you know, so FY twenty-four, we're saying nearly three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I know, Carrie, you touched on this by kind of saying, we don't really know where that comes from. I have to say, I find that, and I probably don't, haven't dived into this enough, and I probably need to do a lot of reading over the next few weeks, but I find that interesting, that even kind of what is a not-so-distant budget, that we can't even say now where we think that might come from or that we had any indication. I know this is a different kind of time with COVID and funding, but we've also had previous years' budgets behind us to also give us some guidance as to roughly, on an annual basis, where our costs are going. So is there any way we can kind of get any sort of clarification on, you know, what we say yes to in two weeks' time, what we're potentially saying no to in twelve, eighteen months' time when we vote on the FY twenty-four budget?
One of the most difficult things about budgeting in the public sector is the fact that we're building a budget in October and November for something that doesn't even come to fruition until next year. And that's why budgets are never paintings on the wall. They're dynamic, they continue to evolve. It is very difficult now to get the information we need, and we've got it down, but for the FY twenty-three budget, I reach out to my curriculum coordinators in September saying, we need to pull together, what do we need? Make your requests. We sit down, and it feels so backwards. It's the norm, but it's backwards to say in September, what do you need for next September when we haven't even navigated through the school year? So to do that a second year out, it would be a bit irresponsible to put, in terms of morale, to put ideas that could be programs in place when you're not sure what some of the major budget drivers, what will happen between now, this whole school year as well as next school year, whether it be maintenance, whether it be special education, out-of-district tuition, whether it be transportation, those are major budget drivers, retirements, and what types of savings we might have. So we, and I'm also sensitive to the fact that you'd be making this decision having a question mark next to that number. So it's really about what is the level of commitment than it is having a menu of this or that? We just can't provide that this early on.
I suppose maybe then, because I totally understand what you're saying. I think my big concern regarding that is, if we vote yes on this, is the shortfall going to, like, impact programs at the high school that were losing staff or options? You know what I mean? I understand it might impact resources or maintenance. I think the bigger picture is, is all of a sudden, are we going to have to start looking at cutting options for high school students?
So one of the things that we can talk about, though, with this is also, and this isn't saying that this is exactly how we would do it, but you're looking for possible suggestions. And we did hear from George Murray tonight, right? Who very clearly talked about our enrollment projectors and projections. And we have been using enrollment to try and really determine the needs of our budget. And so if those numbers are changing in other areas, in older classes or in middle classes or even in the elementary levels, we will respond- we will respond to that and say what makes the most sense fiscally, right? In order to, to support, I think, the programs that we have and the students that we have. And this commitment to this foundation is going to have the impact as students progress through school in a different way. That it, it might be, we, we might have a conversation where we're saying, okay, well, this is what we think. We think that we've carved out $200,000 in one of the years because of the way in which the, you know, the way in, in which the, the, the state funding impacted us, right? Eventually, we don't know how long it will take us, but eventually the, the numbers will, will help our, our enrollment numbers in general, right? But it won't happen right away. But that could, that could impact the money that we're actually receiving. So that might be a way in which we're able to carve and build something into the budget. There might be a year where we say, oh, we don't need as many sections of X because of the student population. In which case we might build it there too. I mean, these, there, there are different possibilities that, that could happen. I think it is about the commitment to the program and the commitment to the equity that I think this establishes for all of our families. And if we're saying that this is a priority, then you give us that clear message so that then we make sure that we can build it into the budget.
And there is some, and I use the word loosely, but flexibility too, that as we're building the future budgets, school choice, for example. I know that this committee over the past several years has talked about the fact that it's carrying out 1.1 or 1.2 million dollar balance. We have about, I'm getting into past territory, 300,000 that we rely on each year as part of our budget building of that. And so if, it would have to be short-term, but if we had to use more in order to decrease that bottom number, that's an option for you.
It extends the number of years.
Yes, we were so excited to do that, but then next year's a cliff. Because, so, you know, we could extend this longer beyond FY twenty-eight if we wanted to strategic or, or lessen the hit to the budget. And that's something that wouldn't have to be decided on for this particular vote. The flexibility would be there for you.
That's a good, yeah, that's a really important point to remember. That it's not that, that timeline.
You're not committing to this.
As wonderful as that timeline was visually and, you know, numerically and budgetarily, it's not set in stone. That's one path.
And I mean, for that matter, if you built more of it into the budget, you would shrink the timeline. In theory.
Thank you. Is this a good time to ask if any of our, our staff or administrators would want to comment on it? I think we'd love to hear any and all comments.
As long as they don't look at the clock that says 10:15.
I'm gonna go change that. It's only 7:15, okay?
I would defer to our staff who know the impact this has on our kids first and foremost. But I think the numbers speak for itself. As scary as it is to look forward to years at a sizable amount of money that we'd have to look at within our budget. It is a practice that we go through each and every year. And the difference is, is are we looking at, what are we going to do when we need to figure out what $300,000 looks like in two years? Versus trying to come up with $900,000 in future years to cover full day kindergarten when we don't have $900,000. This is the first opportunity that we have to have this type of funding that who knows where and when and if we'll ever be afforded that opportunity. So to me, it's almost a either now or who knows when. And this is something that I know the school committee now and even previous now has been committed to wanting to look towards an answer. Not only for the philosophical reasons, but also because of the equity issues on that, that we were seeing now. So that's, that to true, you'd be happy. I'm done talking.
Love listening to you.
So yes, anybody?
Do I have to sit in that chair?
Yeah.
The mic won't pick you up.
Super comfortable.
I'm not quiet.
Cassie Egan, I teach kindergarten at Robinson. So as Carrie said, I was a half-day teacher recently and then have gone to the full day. But when I first was hired, I taught the integrated kindergarten. So I went from a full day to a half day to a full day. And there is no way I can say that I taught the same thing. As much as the standards are the same, the standards are the standards. But the depth of what I was able to do, the understanding that kids had, the numbers of kids, one of the things that we were looking at were the amount of children that needed to go for intervention services in first and second grade because they didn't get that deeper understanding in kindergarten. And that's, that was something that was really challenging. Knowing that, wishing that I would have, was able to do more and only having two and a half hours to do it. The equity is huge for me or inequity. We have now raised those full day classes that we have 11 full day classes and five half-day classes. We offer no sliding scale. There's no scholarship. So we have completely created some have and have nots. So there are children that really would benefit from that full day and just are not given the opportunity. As far as people on the waiting list, I've got a bunch of things. I've been waiting years for this. So, sorry. I'm much better in a group of five and six-year-olds. As far as there not being children on the waiting list, the waiting list or putting your name in for the waiting list comes at the end of the spring year, the prior year. Children that qualify for free and reduced lunch have that tuition payment by half. However, you don't know that if you qualify until after that full day lottery has already happened. So I think it would be interesting to see if there were people that were interested in full day that didn't put in for it because of the cost of it. So having that $4,500, which Gloria, I did look, we are on the very top end of that. Having that be somebody, something that deters families so much from getting, going into that full day or even looking at it. As we know that child development, kids should be playing at this age. And having that opportunity for kids to be able to learn through play, having them be able to make those connections. For people that say their child isn't ready for a full day, I don't think they understand what the pace of that half-day program is to keep up with the new standards that have come out. So just in my teaching, there have been new standards in every area of, of the curriculum frameworks, in language arts, in math, in science, in social studies. All of those areas have increased. Kindergarten's not what it was when we went to school. It's not just playing and there's so much more. And so having that longer day really gives children that flexibility that they need at this age. Anything else?
That was great. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm glad we have that on tape so we can, if we have concerns. I'm just, I'm just gonna refer them to that minute mark and, yeah.
Well, I think that was a really fascinating point about the free and reduced lunch coming in after. I don't think anyone has ever said that to us.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
About the free and reduced lunch qualification coming in after the fact. I don't think anyone has ever shared that with us. And that's frankly horrifying from an equity standpoint. So.
And so it is, if that information is given to families as they, thank you, register. But I don't think that all of those things go through until after that. So you really have some families that I know, when I taught in the half-day program, that just said, we didn't even put in for it because we knew we couldn't afford it.
Yep.
Great point. Thank you. Anyone else from that, from our visitors?
So Kay's our half-day teacher. So she has that other perspective of.
Yeah.
You think they'd be more scary than five or six-year-olds?
Oh, you're much more scary than five or six-year-olds. I'm, I'm in my happy place with five or six-year-olds. So this is my fifth year as a half-day kindergarten teacher. Last year actually was in many ways a good year because all of my colleagues were in the same place as I was. We were all .6. And they were saying to me, oh gosh, we just don't have enough time to do everything. And I was saying, welcome to my world. And actually, for me, it was a bonus because I had 40 minutes a day more than I had normally. And I'm feeling that this year because that extra 40 minutes was huge. To echo Cassie, the equity part of it is huge. And, and to a lot of Carrie's points, the standards are standards. And I am teaching to the standards, but I am skimming the surface of everything. I'm, I don't have the time to go in depth and the pace is fast. Those poor children, we feel sometimes they've just come in and taken their coats off. And we're saying, put your coats on, get your backpacks, goodbye. It's, it's so quick. And it is hard to get to know your children as learners in depth and really feel that you're serving their needs when you have two and a half hours.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just ask, I know when you were saying about going more in depth, you know, I think one of the concerns for me would be that we don't make sure we're kind of, you know, putting a nice ring around, you know, what is going to stay as playtime, social time. You know, and yes, you know, I can know, you can go more in depth and through games and whatever. But, you know, there's a lot to be said for giving them an extra 20 minutes of recess in the playground to let their own imaginations run, run wild. And so, you know, I would just hope that we really protect that extra social, emotional time. Cause it's my thing. For leaving these kids be kids as well before trying to dive in too much to as well to a lot more learning time, even if it is through play.
I totally agree. Yeah. And I tried to build play into my half-day. But then I start to feel guilty because I haven't spent enough time on some of the academics. And so then I'll dream more of the academics. I think, no, it's just not fair. These kids need to play. And I feel that I'm torn between which to do, which full day. You know, yeah, like you said, it'd be great to let them go outside for an extra 20 minutes on a, on a nice day. Let's go outside and play more. So, yeah. I'll share a little bit about the play part.
Okay, so I'm Jennifer Fiori-Pelletier. I've been in Westford since 1999. It's been a really long time. So I'm over 20 years teacher at this point. I started in special ed, special education and then went to the integrated kindergarten program when I transitioned out of special ed. The full day integrated program really gave me that opportunity to put those play experiences in. Because we were servicing some significant children at that point in the program. And so that extra time did allow us to make sure there was sufficient playtime and opportunities, very structured opportunities for social skills, social emotional building. And then I have not had any experience with the half-day program until last year, when we were obviously teaching remotely. And it was very challenging and Kay and I talked about that on a regular basis. Coming back this year, back to full day. But with the loss of the, what the children have lost from not attending the preschool program. So I, right now have, I would say, half the children were still going to some sort of structured program last year. But a half of those families were just not feeling comfortable sending them to a structured pre-K program last year. And the differences are striking. And so that full day opportunity again this year is allowing me to, well, not only did it allow me to do a six-week transition at the start of the school year as opposed to my traditional three-week transition at the start of the school year. I was able to incorporate a term, several more social, emotional lessons and social skills building because we have a larger number of children that just don't know how to do school. And also at the beginning of the year, like you were talking about those extra opportunities for play, we were out, you know, twice a day, larger chunks of time because that's what they needed. It gave them a mask break. It gave them an opportunity to really build that community. And I'm really blessed again this year with the group that I have. Taking that time at the beginning of the year was invaluable. I just finished up parent conferences for the first trimester and the parents were just, they were just so pleased. They were just, they just want their children to be happy and healthy. We're all sort of still struggling with, you know, what's going on with the, the pandemic as it is in this place. So anyway, I'm probably babbling at this point because I'm a little nervous. But those are just some of my thoughts, especially when it comes to the, the social piece, the social emotional piece and the play piece, which has just been a huge focus of mine over the years, coming out of special ed as my, my background.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? This has been a really good discussion, a really good presentation. A lot to think about. I think we're just starting on this path. And I look forward to talking about it at the next meeting and we'll see where we go.
And again, so we're voting, what, next meeting?
On the 20th is what we're, what we've planned to do, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for staying late.
Don't give him an update. He might not want to know.
I like it though. I like it.
Kevin, it's 11:07.
We're gonna update the weather. The building's shaking. There's a wind advisory.
Yeah, it's raining.
Okay, let's move on to the superintendent's 2021, 2122 goals.
So I, I shared with you, I, I was thinking in terms of how I was gonna articulate the entry process and articulate some of the different cultural proficiency things that we, that we already knew that we were working on and trying to articulate the goals. And then I also was able to find Desi's very clear recommendations for first-year superintendents, which was to have three goals. And normally it might be a, a student learning goal, professional practice goal, and then maybe two district improvement goals, which is what the normal cycle is. But their suggestion is for first-year superintendents to have three. And this was actually the, the, the themes and the template that, I mean, I used a lot of the sample entry. I mean, the sample language. So the idea that the first goal being about the effective entry and direct, and direction setting. And so it's about the entry plan, which I've provided you, you know, that initial template with. And then we'll be working towards the, the entry findings report, which will, which will come later. And then maintaining the momentum during the transition. That's where in addition to talking about specifically these goals, articulate, providing our principals with, with feedback and the evaluation process for our principals, I wanted to add in the additional things that we've been talking about, which is about the sense of belonging and about our developing cultural proficiency leadership. And so I, I wanted to add those pieces as well. And then the third goal is focusing on the, there's the rain. Focusing on the new superintendent induction program, which is very comprehensive. And so the idea of having the goals be attached to that. The other, the other suggestion is then to identify specific indicators from the rubric. I'm assuming that you're all familiar with the rubric already. And so what I did is I looked at the rubric and I, I'm making a suggestion that these indicators are aligned with the goals themselves. So that would be my proposal and my suggestion. I'm open to feedback and discussion.
Yeah, thank you for this. And it was exciting to see how. And it was exciting to see how, I was hoping it would align with, you know, the, the entry plan and the things you're doing already. So the fact that there were the resources out there to give you that framework that worked so well was great.
I was just gonna say, in a couple of the workshops we've been in with MASC recently, they've suggested using the entry plan to inform the goals, so I do really appreciate that. We don't want you to have a whole other set of goals, but there's, you know, that process by which we're required to review.
Right.
So I really appreciate how they aligned, so thank you. I think this is phenomenal, phenomenal.
Thank you.
Can I ask, and it's newbie here. In, in general, I thought they were grace, but on a maybe a very like overview level. Do we ever look at the goals of maybe a little bit more kind of practical, like where we would kind of talk about, you know, implementation or kind of bigger projects like, you know, the later start time, the feasibility study. And, and this is purely just a inform, information question for me.
I think when we come out of the entry plan and when we develop a new district, oh, hello, when we develop a new dis- strategic district improvement plan, then I feel like it, they will be aligned with those targeted items that, that you've identified as a committee. As your goals, I'm aligning my goals with that, which is aligned with the strategic improvement goal. When, once that is developed, I absolutely think so.
Okay. Okay.
And to your question also, if you look at past years, yes. In a year that's not a first-year entry plan, you will see things that are more in line with what you're saying.
Yeah.
But this makes sense for.
This year.
For this year, you know, because you're really, the goals are these, these transition and these first-year things. And as you said, there would be more things that come out of the entry plan than just what's on here.
Right.
So we sort of get like a, a second list of goals that are, you know.
Right.
Byproduct of the entry plan.
So when do we do the district, the strategic plan?
So ideally that'll start in, ideally that'll start in the spring after the, after the entry findings and the entry findings report. Then the next piece is for me to then begin to pull together stakeholders to develop, to, to look at the, the findings and then to do additional data gathering now collectively with a working group of key stakeholders to then develop this new strategic district improvement plan, which would then take us over the next couple of years.
How long does that process normally take to do something like?
Well, normally, I mean, it, it depends, I think it, it can take like an entire year to, to work through all of the different goals established, because you have to have working groups, you have to have meetings that are able to go through that, and then you'll go through the process of even refining goals and then what do those action items look like? So it can take a while in order, in order to actually do that normally. They are shifting in nature now because they used to just call them strategic plans. Now they are calling them strategic district improvement plans, which are very much similar to what we've been asking the schools to do. Right? And so instead of a one-year plan that a school would have, we would have maybe a three-year plan, which is what they're suggesting. And then my, my goal plan each year would be linked to that as well too. So it might be more specific action items for that year based on the three-year.
Okay.
There's no rest in this year, in case you're wondering.
I would say too that the, the strategic plan or the district improvement plan, it doesn't, you don't stop working on things until you get that report. So as there's the process of creating those working groups and as there's the process of collecting all that information, that stuff begins to sort of seep out and inform things and there'll be constant feedback to the school committee and there'll be constant feedback to the public because you'll have these working groups. So that information doesn't just live in that draft document until it's delivered. It will start to inform as soon as those groups start working. So while it, it will take a while to get to the end result, the whole process will inform the district and inform things from budget to policy to everything else, so.
Other questions or thoughts? I saw you did mention the recommendation to have a subcommittee. I know we've talked about that. I think, I think it's a good idea. I guess I open it up to the committee as something to think about if.
Again, and it's for the future too.
Yeah, exactly.
They talk about the idea of, of instead of it being, I present the goals and then in June, you then get all the evidence and then you have to evaluate it. There's more of a, the subcommittee could be working on, have multiple meetings throughout the year just focusing on that progress if there's any adjustments that need to be made, which seems to be just a, a more sustainable. And it provides more real-time feedback too, instead of just you find out the goals in October and then you assess them in June.
Yep.
It's an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, it helps you, it helps you.
That's right, right.
That makes sense.
Yeah, ideally.
Ideally, ideally.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to see us move to that. I don't, I think what I would say is let's put that out in the ether right now, think about it and I'll make sure we revisit it on an upcoming meeting. And so just give it some thought if you might be interested. Several of us have been to the, the training on the rubric, but, and the evaluation, but it's, it's all online, so that's not prerequisite by any means. But I do think, yeah, it's the right thing to do going forward, that we add that to our list of subcommittees. Okay, great. No other questions or comments? Thank you for that. It was great to see it and I appreciate you getting it in for this meeting.
You're very welcome.
That was just two.
Our COVID update. So last meeting, I believe I shared with you that our September and October numbers were fairly similar, where there were sixty-three positive cases. And at that time in November, we had fewer than that. We did get, end up with quite a jump at the very end. So our, our overall November number of positive cases, I think, was seventy-nine. I think, I think that's what I had. So it did go up. But then you saw, I mean, we saw and we've had the discussions that had led up to the different weeks as well. But when you look at, at the most recent data, it, why I can't see those numbers, I gotta make that larger here. Where, where we've had, the close contacts have gone down. Our positive cases did go up this last week. It's not higher than it has been at, at another time, but I think it also does change as to when those things were happening. And we did get an increase after the Thanksgiving holiday as well. We have had a, a question or two about, you know, continuing to collect data to remove masks and I, I don't think that that's a recommendation for us at this moment in time, just with everything increasing. We are still waiting to see what the, what we're gonna be looking at as we get closer to January, where right now the, the current Desi mandate is through January fifteenth and the health department mandate doesn't have a specific end date, I don't believe. As we have more and more students who are getting vaccinated, I think we will look to extend, when we, when we, when we're ready to have those conversations, I think we'll look to extend the surveys to collect information to see if we might have a, a greater capacity of eighty percent. That's not my recommendation at this time that we do that. So I know that there are people who are asking those questions, but I, I just don't think that's the right thing for us to be doing. So it is not my recommendation.
Yeah, so I, I do have a question, like Westford and Hopkinton, they do actually share similar demographics and then the vaccination rate. So how does like Hopkinton, they actually make mask optional in the high school for, for three weeks and then they extend it? So, so probably there are some interesting thing to learn from them as well. And I, I know that after January, probably some other schools, they also trying to say, like after two weeks after holiday, make mask optional. And then, and also like with the vaccination and then also the testing. So do similar testing or pool testing will help to, with that. Is this something which we should actually talk to their superintendent to see how they're doing things?
I, I can reach out to the Hopkinton superintendent to find out if, if their community was, was fully supportive of it, which I do think is a difference because I don't think our community is fully supportive of it. I think our community, I think there are people who, who would very much like us to do that, but that was my, that was, that was my, my feedback from the survey in the first place was that people didn't, weren't, weren't volunteering that information. Yes, we could date, we could dive in and, and validate and verify the vaccination numbers for ourselves, but then we're also, that wasn't the, that wasn't the, I think, the, the tone of, of the community at the time. And now things have changed significantly since then. That's why I'm saying now isn't the time for us to, to be thinking about doing it. But I'm very open to looking at when we can, you know, and so to, to have that information. And so I think, I think after the winter break is, is a different time, just like it's, I'm curious to see what the commissioner's gonna do around January fifteenth in the first place.
Yeah. Based on the report, Hopkinton actually is pretty successful. They don't, like, and the high school, they make mask optional.
Yeah.
And then it's, it's, it's super successful for them. And especially on the, they don't have, they don't have a surge in positive cases. And then, and it is well received by both staff and students on the S E L side.
It's interesting though, because they don't have a surge, but yet we do. And so they're doing something better than, not, not in the schools, I, I don't think, I, I'm not worried about in-school transmission for us. As a community, that's what, you know, you saw my email response, like, we need to do better as a community so that we feel comfortable making that change. Hopkinton had ten cases, ten new cases in their schools last week versus our twenty-eight. And again, I don't think ours are, ours aren't really predominantly in-school transmission per se, but just as a community, we have, you look at our numbers, we are a very high transmission community relative to.
We are, our case count throughout the town is high.
Yeah, so we need to do better so that we can feel comfortable. Because I think maybe taking the mask off the high school where everybody's vaccinated, it actually might not have that big of an impact on the case numbers. You know, I think with vaccination.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see where the cases are coming from.
It might not, but I think from a comfort level standpoint, we're all still very conditioned when we see numbers like this to say, "Now is not the time." I, I think we need to see numbers get lower. And I don't know if Omicron hit Westford or something, I don't know, like it's, it's, I don't know what to say about, you know.
It's already in Massachusetts.
It's already in Massachusetts, it could be, it could be.
I was just gonna say that I appreciate that the town slides are, are part of it, right? Because as you're looking at the school numbers, you're, I mean, the town chart speaks for itself. But even closer to home, I think I read that Littleton is applying for a waiver from their board of health mandate for their high school to do a trial mask optional. So that might be a.
I, I don't think that that's a, a bad idea. I, I think it's really strange that people would be wanting to do it between Thanksgiving and the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
That to me is what, I'm like, when Hopkinton did this earlier and they were the first town to do it and the only town for quite a while, that was a, that was an interesting test case, right? For them, based on, based on their information. To talk about it now to me is, just doesn't make any sense.
Two weeks after January.
We'll know a lot more, we'll know a lot more on January twenty.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
So I actually, I've been fielding questions about what happens to test and stay once we reach the point where most of our students are vaccinated? Because test and stay is not for vaccinated students, it's for unvaccinated students. And, and we're not gonna have the answer tonight. I don't want anyone to think they have to answer this tonight. But I think we should start thinking about what are we looking at once we get to the point where the majority of our K through twelve have the option to be vaccinated? That wind is insane. It's a little crazy. I don't know if it's, test and stay just goes away? I don't know if we go back to close contact or if we maybe wanna consider pool testing? But I think it's, it's probably with the news out of, I, I guess the Pfizer CEO said the other day that they fully expect to see the results for five and under to drop by the end of the year. So we could be seeing some time in the beginning of the new year. So we should probably start thinking about, what does it look like when our population is majority vaccinated? What happens to test and stay? Does it become pool testing? What are our options there?
It's, it's one of the reasons why the test and stay numbers weren't as high when the positive cases were in the high school.
Right.
Because there weren't as many close contacts.
Right, right.
Because they're vaccinated. So your close contact number does drop because you're only then, you only then would need to quarantine if you were symptomatic, if you were vaccinated. And so it does, it, that does change, right? I, I don't think we would be eliminating test and stay. I don't, I don't see us doing that. I think it would just, I think it would, it would just decrease the, 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 the number of people using it. So how we're doing it might change, you know? I mean, then we could be talking about other, you know, other mitigation strategies at that point if it was more manageable then to shift to something else, but, but yeah.
Yeah. It's starting to be asked now that the kid, the younger kids, like the eleven-year-olds are getting vaccinated, so.
Yeah.
But not everyone may be vaccinated for whatever reason.
This is true.
That's right, that's true.
This is true. So that's why we need to have a conversation.
Yeah.
Right.
Other questions? To be continued, as always.
Hopefully not as always though, at least the COVID.
As always so far.
Right.
My eight-year-old did ask the other day, she was like, "When is it going away?"
Well, normally, it takes like five to ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, while you're looking to the Spanish.
It's nine forty-five.
Yeah, we're back, we're almost back on. Personnel update?
Yep.
Anything of note to report?
There's nothing of note to report.
Okay. Thank you for providing that. Unless anyone has other business, I would entertain a motion here.
Motion to adjourn?
That's not good. Okay, all in favor? We are adjourned.